Rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To do a selfie before our TV.
Oh, is that right? No, is that your city council?
I'll do this after.
Yeah, send Henry to.
So, John, I did take your C9.
Not a problem. I think they took the chairs away, so we didn't even. I almost wanted to say, well, Carl, it's just used to habits.
Kind of where I go. I used to whatever you might mean. So, that's why I just kind of automatically went there.
I assume that a meeting today would take.
It was way over there, isn't it?
Yes, I do. Very well, yes.
He's standing there, I set up 500 of them, so she's kind of like, what?
Do you always have high maintenance?
Okay.
Yes.
He's checking.
Wow.
There we go.
Well, did he, Roy?
I got, he's going to give her a hard time.
At least that's what I told.
Yeah.
You always know when Roy's coming.
That's right.
Here for the.
Let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a period of silent meditation.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is Mayor's Award of Excellence.
Good morning, good afternoon, members of the council. Thank you for letting me come up one more time and present the Mayor's Award of Excellence, this time for the month of April. It's being presented to a team from the Solid Waste Management Division of the Public Works and Utilities Department. Solid Waste Operations Supervisor Kevin Patack and landfill operators Jason Killingworth and Mark Reynolds are the joint recipients of the award. They were nominated by their superintendent, Carla Welding. She nominated this team of veteran employees in the categories of customer relations and productivity for their work in repairing and rebuilding the walking floor and the pedestal boom in the transfer station just last year. The walking floor is used to move waste brought in by customers to the waste transfer trailers. The pedestal boom is used to push the waste into the top-loaded trailers. And if you need more information than that, you'll have to ask the award winners here today. The transfer station was built in the late 1980s and owner, and only minor repairs have been made to these facilities since then. The steel substructure on which the walking floor is mounted was paper-thin due to years of abrasive materials moving across it. The hydraulic cylinders for the pedestal boom also needed to be resealed. The work on the customized walking floor, substructure, and the electrical and hydraulic system was needed to improve reliability and to allow for quicker, safer repairs in the future. Kevin first designed a plan to handle the waste accepted during the time that the transfer station would be out of service. That plan had to account for customers and waste being exposed to wind and rain, a change in the offloading procedures, an alternate method to load waste into the trailers and containers, and the need for employees to make more trips to the bluff road landfill. A whole temporary structure needed to be organized. Mark then took the lead role in the project's technical aspects, revising the steel substructure, bracing, and taking measurements for all of the custom-made steel pieces. He also directed Jason during the disassembly and assembly of the walking floor and the steel substructure. Mark and Jason did all the welding and took extra time to hide all of the seams so it looked nice. The project was completed with no injury to employees or to customers and no issues related to the transferring of waste in the landfill. The team's effort resulted in about $20,000 of savings. Their work also improved the reliability of the entire waste transfer facility and provided safer working conditions for the staff. So, it is my pleasure this afternoon to present Jason Killingworth and Kevin Patack and Mark Reynolds with the Mayor's Award of Excellence for April. Gentlemen, please join me up here, and thank you for your hard work.
Mark? Thank you very much. And you got them all together, good for you. Here, you want to say a few words?
Yeah. Just want to thank the guys. Between the three of us, we've got 49 combined years, so thank you for the award, appreciate it.
All right. And gentlemen, you should, we could probably have you recognize your family members who came to see you receive the award.
Home of life, 33 years. My fiancee, Michelle, of four years.
You'll get there. Great.
Tom, did you want to say a few words? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Council members, I just wanted to express my sincere thanks to Kevin and Mark and Jason for their hard work, innovation, and determination to repair and rebuild the walking floor and the pedestal boom at the landfill. And thank you to Mayor for recognizing this great achievement. These guys really thought outside the box, and I'm very pleased. And I don't know if you've ever seen the walking floor or not, but it's a pretty interesting piece of machinery. And they thought outside the box and well beyond their expectations of the position responsibilities that they had. And they did this all while they kept the site running smoothly. We had no accidents out there, we had no incidents out there. Rebuilding and repairing this equipment during normal working hours and maintaining operations at the transfer station is no easy task. But these three were not only up to the challenge, but initiated the idea originally in an effort to save the money for the department and to make the area safer for employees and customers. Many of their coworkers also stepped up to the plate during this time and provided needed assistance to handle the new waste handling procedures and to guide customers. Again, Kevin, Mark, and Jason, thank you. And you represent the kind of innovative thinking and forward-thinking we all strive for. We are very proud to have you as part of Public Works and Utilities. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, guys. All right. In accordance with L.B. 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The order of business of the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating the name, address, and whether you are speaking in favor or in opposition for the item. The testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second to and last meetings of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue on the agenda for the, not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. And tonight is, or this afternoon is an open-mic session. Will the clerk please call the first item of business?
And once again, we'd request those giving testimony to please clearly state your name and address and to sign in on the sign-in sheet laying on the podium. The consent agenda are items 1 through 21.
Anyone wishing to speak on these items? All right, next item.
Do we vote on those right away?
Yes.
Okay.
Roy.
I'd like to make an amendment to item 6 and replace Jane Raybold's name with Cindy Lamb's name to be on the Joint Budget Committee. This amendment is being offered at the request of Councilwoman Raybold and the consent of Councilwoman Lamb.
Second.
Motion made by Roy and seconded by Carl. Discussion? Okay, call the roll on the amendment.
On the amendment. Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right. Then we'll vote on, take the items as a whole block?
Sure. Well, items 1 through 10 were introduced by Christensen.
So moved. Seconded by Lyrian. Discussion? Call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb? Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. And items 12 through 18 were introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
By Roy. Discussion? Call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right.
Liquor resolutions. Item 22 is an application of Lincoln Children's Zoo for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area approximately 1,500 feet by 400 feet at Zooville Square in the Lincoln Children's Zoo at 1222 South 27th Street on June 12, 2015, from 6:00 p.m. to midnight. I should have said too that those giving testimony are asked to come forward, and witnesses shall state their names and addresses. Also, applicants or witnesses are not required to stay for the voting session.
Thank you very much. My name is John Chapo. I live at 2340 Stockwell Street and the president and CEO of the Lincoln Children's Zoo. We again request the City Council to grant our request for this controlled permit for our large fundraising event at the zoo. It's a major fundraiser at the zoo. It's a friend-rouser fundraiser. It's a, and the wonderful thing about the Lincoln Children's Zoo is we can control the crowds pretty easily because of an eight-foot fence around there. And so it's, again, it's a wonderful evening, as long as we've got great weather. And I know you're not in charge of that, but we ask for your positive consideration of our request. Thank you.
Any questions for John?
Yes. Just to be clear, that children will not be present at this event?
Correct. It is an adult party in the evening after the zoo closes to the public.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, Sina, thank you.
Thank you kindly.
Anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? All right, next item.
Next, I'll call several items. Items, I'll call several items together, starting with item 23. Application of Lancaster Ag Society, Lancaster Event Center for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area approximately 545 feet by 313 feet at Mulbach Motorsports Complex at 4100 North 84th Street on June 12, 2015, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:30 a.m. And item 24 is an application of the same for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area approximately 545 feet by 313 feet at Mulbach Motorsports Complex at 4100 North 84th Street on June 27, 2015, from 2:00 p.m. to 1:30 a.m. Item 25 is for the same applicant, the same location, but for July 18, 2015, from 2:00 p.m. to 1:30 a.m. Item 26 is for the same applicant and same area at the Mulbach Motorsports Complex, same location, on August 6, 2015, from 2:00 p.m. to 1:30 a.m. Item 27 is the same applicant, and it is for the same area. It's an outdoor area, 285 feet by 160 feet at Lancaster Superfair Entertainment Tent at 4100 North 84th Street on August 5, 6, 7, and 8, 2015, from noon to 1:30 a.m. Application of the same for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area approximately 550 feet by 50 feet at the Mulbach Motorsports Complex Bleacher Area at 4100 North 84th Street on July 30 and 31 and August 1, 2, 3, and 4, 2015, from noon to 1:30 a.m. Item 29 is for the same applicant to cover an outdoor area approximately 550 feet by 50 feet at Mulbach Motorsports Complex Bleacher Area at 4100 North 84th Street on August 5, from noon to 1:30 a.m. Item 30 is by the same applicant, same feet, same area on August 7 and 8, 2015, from noon to 1:30 a.m. Continuing with item 31, application by the same. And this area is 285 feet by 160 feet at the Lancaster Superfair Entertainment Tent at 4100 North 84th Street on July 30 and 31 and August 1, 2, 3, and 4, 2015, from noon to 1:30 a.m. Item 32 is the same applicant to cover an outdoor area 545 feet by 313 feet at the Mulbach Motorsports Complex at 4100 North 84th Street on August 22, 2015, from 2:00 p.m. to 1:30 a.m. Item 33, same applicant. The outdoor area is 550 feet by 50 feet at the Mulbach Motorsports Complex Bleacher Area at 4100 North 84th Street on August 29, 2015, from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And finally, item 34. The same applicant for an outdoor area 550 feet by 313 feet at Mulbach Motorsports Complex at 4100 North 84th Street on September 19, 2015, from 2:00 p.m. to 1:30 a.m.
I'm glad I didn't have to read all those. Thanks, Sandy. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Susan Wyler. I'm the Associate Director out at the Lancaster Event Center. My address is 3711 North 14th Street.
And a bunch of different special events for things you have going on at the Ag Society?
Yes, we have the motorsports area, and we rented it out for several bull rides, mud runs, volleyball, mud volleyball, plus things for the fair. We have figure-eight races and monster trucks, hay hauling, demolition derby. Just a little bit of everything going on.
Sounds like fun. Great. Questions, Carl?
I have never been to a bull ride.
Oh.
But, and it might take alcohol to get me on one, but I'm assuming the bull riding and the alcohol consumption is not intertwined, is it?
No, no. This is for the spectators.
All right, thank you.
Get him out to a bull ride.
Yeah. Any other questions? All right, Sina, thank you. Anyone else would like to speak to this item? All right, next item.
I'll call items 35 and 36 together. Item 35 is an application of Blue Blood Brewing Company, Inc., doing business as Blue Blood Brewing Company for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area approximately 70 feet by 90 feet at 500 West South Street on June 12, 2015, from noon to 1, 11. p.m. 36 is the application of Blue Blood Brewing Company, Inc., doing business as Blue Blood Brewing Company for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area approximately 70 feet by 90 feet at 500 West South Street on June 27, 2015, from noon to 11 p.m.
Okay. Anyone here wishing to speak on this item? All right. It's, we'll go on to the next, we'll go on to the next one.
Okay. Item 37 is the application of GNS Corporation, doing business as Cappy's for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area approximately 55 feet by 55 feet at 5560 South 48th Street on June 14, from 10:30 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
All right.
My name's John Caprelli, GM for Cappy's Bar, reside at 5100 Spruce Street. If you guys have any questions.
Any questions? Seen none? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Okay, next item.
Item 38 is the application of Zipline Brewing Company, LLC, doing business as Zipline Brewing Company for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area approximately 70 feet by 72 feet at 2100 Magnum Circle on June 29, 2015, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Good afternoon. My name's Craig Ryer. I'm the Director of Marketing and Events at Zipline Brewing Company. My address is 1740 South 49th Street. We're seeking a special designated license for Friday, June 19. We're going to be hosting the Six Annual Kegs for the Cure, which is a charity event. It's founded to raise money for a worthy cause, which is the American Cancer Society, sharing the talents of many home, local home brewers. It brings together family and friends to provide support for those directly affected by cancer and those who provide support. We're just asking for an area off the taproom. It'll be a separate event from our taproom, but in the parking lot, it'll cover about half the parking lot of our building out there, and it won't, shouldn't affect any of the other tenants in regards to moving in and out.
Okay. Questions?
We have to take any questions.
John?
Yeah, unless I'm misreading something on the application, it said the location would be at Piedmont Shop.
I think, I put two applications in. I canceled one of them because we found out it wasn't going to work out. So that was a separate one. There should be one there for our parking lot.
Okay, got it. So you canceled the other one.
Yeah, I called ahead and yeah, I thought it was off the agenda, but the application might have gone in.
All right. Any other questions? Seen none, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else would like to speak to this item?
Sir Chair, I would like to move approval of items 22 through 34 and 37 through 38.
All right. Seconded by Roy. Discussion?
Let's talk for a moment about Blue Blood Brewery's SDO request. That one is for June 12.
Yeah.
Which is, do you find out, Carl?
Yeah, just had contact with them, and they apologized. They will be here before the end of the meeting. If we could hold off on acting on.
So we can hold that vote until later.
Should we just take that before the voting session?
Right.
Okay. All right. How do we do that? I mean, do we just?
I'll just make a motion to hold it open through the meeting.
So right now, we're talking about 22 through 34.
Well, let's vote on that end and have a discussion on the next item. Do we just hold, do we make an alteration to the agenda? Or do we just? Okay. Okay, sounds good. All right.
So we're just voting on 22 through 34?
And 37.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold? Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right. We'll move on to the next item.
Okay, public hearing resolutions. Item 39. Certifying the appointment of Carl Eskridge to the West Haymarket Joint Public Agency to fill an unexpired four-year term for so long as such representative serves in his position as council member.
Jeff Kirkpatrick, Lincoln City Attorney. This is an appointment to fill Doug Emery's position. The position has to be filled by someone who is on the City Council, and so Mr. Eskridge will be appointed to serve out the rest of the term that Emery was started.
All right, any questions for Jeff? All right. Anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? Okay, next item.
Item 40. Authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Lincoln and the State of Nebraska Department of Roads for the concrete girder inspection of the Penny Bridges located on Sheridan Boulevard.
Randy Hoskins, Assistant City Engineer. Basically, what this is, the city has no one, and there are no consultants in town that have anyone that is qualified to do this testing work. The Department of Roads does have people that are qualified to do this, and so we have created this memorandum to, understanding to work with them and have them do the inspection and observation of the girders being constructed for the Penny Bridge.
Questions? Jane?
Randy, wasn't also the University of Nebraska in helping with the inspection of the Penny Bridge as part of one of the classes for their engineering students?
They did some work in looking at the stresses on those bridges. Yeah. It was, it was a chance to kind of test, test the strength of those bridges, if you will, and see the original design calculations and how accurate they were after a bridge has been in place this long.
Okay. So I take it it's a really highly specialized inspection if there's no private sector availability and, and no one in the city who does this kind of work?
It's, it's a combination of highly specialized and probably not a lot of call for doing this kind of work. And so is it worthwhile for somebody to go get tested for that?
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? All right, next item.
Item 41 is approving the extension of the termination date of an existing intergovernmental agreement previously approved by Resolution Number A-87288 between Nebraska Department of Environmental Quality and the City of Lincoln from June 12, or June 30, 2015, to December 31, 2016.
Good afternoon. Ben Higgins with Public Works. This is a funding agreement with NDQ for some best management practice or water quality projects over at the zoo. And we put this out to bid last year, and we had a really high bids come back in. So we rejected those bids, and we want to rebid it out. But we need to work with the zoo's schedule, which is they want to do fall construction because it doesn't work really good to have contractors there during, during zoo season. And so we need to extend the existing agreement to another, to further out that date, so.
Is there any fiscal impact to extending the agreement?
Uh, no, there's not. There's no changes in funding whatsoever on this, so. And no change, and we're not changing any revenue sources either, so.
Any other questions for Ben? Carl?
Yes. Ben, you might want to explain just a little bit about the project and the necessity for it.
So what we're doing out here is we're doing some like bioswells out here. We're kind of redoing the whole front entrance there. They're having some, they're also having problems with the leaking kind of down into the basement down there, and then kind of in that lower area where that lower trail is, they've been having some problems there. So we're going to redo that. Those trees that are out there, there's, I think there's two or three big trees out there. They're getting close to the end of their life, so they're going to take those out. And they're going to have like porous pavement up in that, not porous pavement, but pavers up there that are more porous pavers up in that area. So just a lot of different little BMP suites over there, and it's a really great place for us too because of really a lot of people go through that, so it's a real good educational opportunity for water quality in that area there.
Thank you.
And we sent that forward over to NDQ a couple of years ago, and they were pretty much in big favor of that, too. So we got, their cost share is 60% of it.
Wow, great. Great. Any other questions for Ben? All right, thanks, Ben.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Okay, next item.
We don't vote on those right now, do we?
No, we can vote on those at the end of public hearing.
The right time. Okay. So now we're going into public hearing ordinances, second reading, and related resolutions. I'll call items 42 and 43 together. Item 42 is a use permit, 117E, application of Peters Properties LLC to remove the land use table, maximum floor area tables, and land area calculations from the site plan, and approve the waiver to eliminate the specific use regulation as defined in 27.51.030, Section C1. section C-1, on property generally located west of South Fourteenth Street and Garrett Lane. Item forty-three is a text amendment, fifteen-zero-zero-six, amending sections twenty-seven-point-five-one-point-zero-three-zero and twenty-seven-point-six-four-point-zero-one-zero of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to the I-III Employment Center District to allow the city council to waive specific use regulations set forth in section twenty-seven-point-five-one-point-zero-three-zero and repealing sections twenty-seven-point-five-one-point-zero-three-zero and twenty-seven-point-six-four-point-zero-one-zero of the Lincoln Municipal Code as hitherto existing.
Good afternoon, council members. Brad Marshall with Olson Associates, 601 P Street. I'm here on behalf of J. Peters, the applicant. Mr. Peters owns two lots in Horizon Business Center. Horizon Business Center was set up in the late nineties, and at the same time the I-III zoning district was created. A little bit, a few specifics about the I-III zoning district. It incorporates basically a percentage that is included as part of the employment center to facilitate retail, flex uses, and office use. We've been working with the planning department with this development for a very long time. We've gone through about twenty-six different administrative amendments and amendments throughout the process, and the development itself is about seventy-five percent built out. Mr. Peters has owned these lots for several years without much interest from our marketing perspective. He owns two lots that have fast food restaurant and bank, drive-through bank, located on these designated for these pieces. He wants to remarket these as straight retail, and in order to do that and to enlarge his footprint, to make it a little bit more economical for himself, the only way to do this was to go through an entire amendment. And so through that amendment, we've worked with staff, and the recommendation to take off land use table and the designations for commercial uses or office or retail or flex to be removed from that completely. So it does give him and the rest of the development a little bit more flexibility to continue to grow out. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions for Brad? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Next item. Staff, you go.
I just didn't know.
Any staff questions?
I do.
Oh, all right. Go ahead. Who do you want to speak to?
David Carey.
David.
Or Steve, whichever.
Yeah. Hey, David, can we, oh, here we go. I didn't know if you were listening or not.
Steve Hendrickson with the planning department, filling in for David Carey, who's been, needs to leave immediately for the month.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question, though. I just walked in.
Yeah, I didn't ask you yet. This is associated, there's an amendment, a text amendment that goes along with this specific provision for this location at the Horizon Business Center. Can you speak a little bit about how this is creating flexibility in this particular instance, but also allowing future opportunities for flexibility along with public input and review still at the planning commissioning council?
Sure. I think we mostly felt comfortable with this particular amendment because the project is so well-developed and brought along. It allows the council to start with some initial ground rules in terms of, these are trying to be mostly areas for employment where you have a lot of industrial, perhaps office uses, but with some accessory retail uses, so this still keeps that initial framework, where you have to meet those provisions in terms of how much of the space is developed. But ultimately, over time, as it becomes a more mature area like this one, the council could then remove those after you go back through the hearing process. And so that's what's happening with Horizon, is it's mostly built out, the roads are in the infrastructure, the smaller lots, so if there was concern about this being sold with one vision as a small employer area, but then suddenly switching to a big-box retail, that has long since passed because of the way it has developed.
And so the other two I-III zones in the city, while they have the opportunity to come back and ask for future flexibility, right now they aren't affected directly by this? This is...
Correct. So it wouldn't apply to either one of the other two. One is just getting started. The main one that is underway is the Landmark Employment Center, which is along North Thirty-third Street, north of Superior. It's doing, it has a fair amount of businesses out there. There's probably less concern just given its current location, that it would become retail, but, and we have not had near the number of amendments or changes like we had at Horizon.
Didn't you have like twenty-six or something?
Yeah, twenty-six, twenty-eight amendments in there. It was just really, on both sides, for us and the developers, it was becoming more of a paperwork than any real gain to either side, both on the city regulatory side or for the private developers. So we thought, that's why we thought this was a good solution, but still case by case.
Thank you for coming up for the solution that's going to cut some red tape for everybody.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, next item.
Item forty-four, approving an amendment to the bond ordinance for the City of Lincoln, Aspen Heights redevelopment project in greater downtown Lincoln to create another bond purchaser-type and set priorities for repayment.
Members of the council, David Landis, Urban Development Department Director, this is a redevelopment agreement that we brought to you, but in the intervening time has been this course of discussion between the law department and the developer in the city. What we found is that in our developer-purchased bonds, we have been doing business with either the developer themselves, where they bring the equity, or their lender. Subsequently, because these are very secure loans, we've had interested parties who've wished to be considered as the purchaser of bonds, and particularly in the case of A-bonds that are essentially for particularly public parts of the project. That provides us with an opportunity to do business with people who are legitimate, appropriate, and that we'd like to do business with, and that is the case for this one and the following issue, which is Block sixty-eight. The drafting of the language itself was done by the law department. We would anticipate that we might see this language in future redevelopment agreements. We have no reason to think that this alters the position of the city, and that is that we have no risk for these bonds. We do not stand behind them or guarantee them. They are in the marketplace at the risk of the bondholder, and there are people who would like to be bondholders other than the developer or the developer's lender. And for that reason, we think the city's interest is at least as well off or perhaps better than what it was with the original language.
All right. Questions for Dave? Jeff?
Could I answer any questions? Nothing really further added from what Dave has already said.
Great. Any questions for Jeff? All right, thank you. Did we read item forty-five, or were you just on...
No, I can read it.
All right, let's go with forty-five, and then do the same song and dance.
Item forty-five is approving an amendment to the bond ordinance for the City of Lincoln, Block sixty-eight, redevelopment project in greater downtown Lincoln to create another bond purchaser-type and set priorities for repayment.
Members of the council, David Landis, Urban Development Department Director, ditto.
I figured that's what it was going to be. Cool. Any questions for Dave? All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on these items? Okay, before we end the public hearing, can we jump back to item thirty-five and thirty-six?
Do you want me to read them?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Thirty-five and thirty-six. Item thirty-five is application of Blue Blood Brewing Company, Inc., doing business as Blue Blood Brewing Company for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area approximately seventy feet by ninety feet at 500 West South Street on June twelfth, 2015, from noon to eleven p.m. And item thirty-six is an application of Blue Blood Brewing Company, Inc., doing business as Blue Blood Brewing Company for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area approximately seventy feet by ninety feet at 500 West South Street on June twenty-seventh, 2015, from noon to eleven p.m.
Brian Podwinski with Blue Blood, ninety-three, twenty-two, South Twenty-eighth. I apologize for being tardy today. Do you have any questions on these events, or...
Any questions for Brian? All right. Carl?
Well, you've been here many, many times, so we'll certainly forgive this one. Thanks for coming back. We appreciate it.
No problem. I do apologize.
We just wanted to make sure you got your vent in since our meeting...
We missed it.
Yeah.
Weekend's a fundraiser, and then I believe next weekend is a ultimate frisbee tournament, so...
Okay, great, good. Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're out of order, and I'd like to go ahead and move approval of these two items.
Before we do that, anyone else who's wishing to speak on this item? All right, go ahead.
Second.
Motion made, seconded by Roy. Discussion? Call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Carey, seven to zero.
All right. Move on to the next item.
Well, this is the end of public hearing, so we can go into the voting session. So we're starting with item twenty, or item thirty-nine?
Yes.
Okay, it is certifying the appointment of Carl Eskridge to the West Haymarket Joint Public Agency to fill an unexpired for-year term for so long as such representative serves in his position as council member, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Jane. Discussion? Call the roll.
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item forty is authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Lincoln and the State of Nebraska Department of Roads for the concrete girder inspection of the Penny Bridges located on Sheridan Boulevard, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Carl. Discussion? Call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item forty-one, approving the extension of the termination date of an existing intergovernmental agreement previously approved by Resolution Number A-87288 between Nebraska Department of Environmental Quality and the City of Lincoln from June thirtieth, 2015, to December thirty-first, 2016. It is introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by John. Discussion? Call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item forty-six is a change of zone, fifteen-zero-zero-four, of Vavreena Meadows Planned Unit Development, application of R.C. Kruger Development Company, for a change of zone to add an overlay P.U.D. designation upon existing R-three residential district, B-two planned neighborhood business district, and H-four general commercial district property for approval of special permitted uses for residential health care facility and early childhood care facility, and for approval of the development plan for the P.U.D., which proposes modifications to the zoning ordinance, land subdivision ordinance, and design standards on property generally located at South Fourteenth Street and Yankee Hill Road. Item forty-six is introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Roy. Discussion? Call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item forty-seven is a change of zone, fifteen-zero-ten, application of Madison Avenue Lofts, LLC, to designate the former Nebraska Wesleyan Hospital as a landmark, changing the zoning district from B-three to B-three with landmark overlay on property generally located at North Forty-eighth Street and Madison Avenue. Item forty-seven is introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Carl. Carl?
Yes, thank you. I just really appreciate Mr. Harris stepping up and taking over this property and restoring it. It's, you know, we don't have enough of our landmarks in the community that have been recognized and cared for, and this particular facility is out in University Place. It was a hotel, it's been a hospital, it provided housing for World War I soldiers, and now will be apartments for Nebraska Wesleyan students. So just, you know, a great use, and really appreciate the recognition of this important landmark.
Sidney?
Thank you. I'd like to echo what Councilman Eskridge stated. I believe that this is a really strong landmark in the University Place area, and I think it provides right on a corner, and whenever I go by it, I think of the impact of that being in the community and how awful it would be if someone else had taken ownership and decided to tear it down or something of that nature. So I do appreciate Mr. Harris's efforts, and am looking forward to seeing the outcome.
All right. Anyone else? Call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item forty-eight is a street and alley vacation, fifteen-zero-zero-three, vacating the remaining portion of the east-west alley in the block bounded by M. Street, South Twenty-first Street, N. Street, and South Twentieth Street, introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Carl. Discussion? Call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Resolutions, first reading are items forty-nine through fifty-two. And related resolutions, it is item fifty-three. No item on the pending list, date certain, and no items in the pending list, and this is an open microphone session.
All right. Anyone wishing to address the council, come forward.
Hi, I'm James Wuboda. I invite you to a paradise on earth. There are some corrections. Nanos have been used only by foreigners to go into Americans' head to ask, to self-inflict after an intensity of pleasure where they have tried to strangle a wife. Wear rosary for the best influences. O in Thirty-third Street has a flagpole with two feet wide, a hundred feet up, with electric cables. Do flagpoles need electricity? No. This flagpole is a giant subliminal. Harden Hall rooftop has mazers that could be beaming to light posts that have a number related to a Chinese using their computer to damage the top of the head where mapping skills and routine are. Throw out the TV. Wear rosary and a magnetic label meant for the fridge under the hat or bandana. Subliminals make receivers do adultery or incest. If affected, one can seek a new shelter so the family member doesn't do away with one. Poltria with avian flu can, can be sprayed with water and peppermint and add coconut oil to the feed. Grow peppermint next to your cornfield. Porcine epidemic flu ends with elderberries. Boil them first for human use. Grow elderberry shrubs nearby. Pigs and cattle improve their health by rolling in the mud. Humans can lick clay or dirt for any tainting, detox, or disease. Eat a spoonful of arrow wood powder for any neurotoxin, neurological disease, or chemical detox. Sugar detoxes dioxin. Clay detoxes all hazardous waste. Take the tanks off the rails and add clay if the lids can be opened in any town. Have a bi-ond air purifier in the bedroom in case of a derailment of hazardous waste. Send clay powder in the air with a blower to cleanse the air. For a face mask, lay cotton in the bathroom sink with arrow root powder and water until dry for the chemicals in the air. Plutonium, like at Rocky Mountain Flats, can be plowed under with a robot driving the tractor. Let's end nuclear plants. No one needs a form of electricity that causes employees to pass away of radiation. Put nuclear fuel rods on the moon. Rivers next to nuclear plants have been flooded since 2008 to make nuclear plants at risk. Coal-fired electricity plants can have wood knuckles and corn cups as well as coal. Our coal-fired plants can have a slanted chimney. At the top, water sprays over the smoke so there's no air pollution at all. All our factories can be located 20 miles from the city. Buses come to bring workers. Area zoned so no homes are nearby. Nobody gets air pollution with smoke stacks slanted at the factory with a water spray. Factories of caustics can have a sand sucker aimed at a roof of factory. So, if the factory is sabotaged, sand suckers immediately covers the chemical with sand or dirt or clay powder. Indoor mixes of chemicals can have bio-air filters and/or biosuits. Vats of metal toxicity can be outdoors made only in the summer. Other chimneys can have carbon filters. Miners wear OSHA masks and/or biosuits and receive a steam room detoxing after each day. The leftover sludge can be dried into bricks. Any kind of waste can be dried into bricks. Some bricks can go inside cement trucks. Detroit can have a skyscraper from dried bricks of this sludge. A van can pick up homeless persons each day to pick through our landfills and bring what they find to a farmer's market to sell.
Anyone else who'd like to speak in open mic?
Mr. Jerrison, knowing coming forward, I would move for adjournment.
Second.
Seconded by Larry. Call the roll.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Christiansen.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
We are adjourned.